Before I get too far along, Roseanne Schuch did bring us a lovely donation item. And so this is a 2000, right? Is that what it says? 2000 GOP National Convention bag, bookbag. So you're, uh, we aren't taking donations for that. If anybody would be interested in wanting to make a sizable donation for the bookbag, we'd be happy to place that in their hands tonight. So if you're thinking about that, we'll talk for that at the end of the evening. Oh, there's Murray. So, uh, with that, there are agendas on the back, as always, so hopefully everybody picked up a copy of it. And we should have that out in front of everybody. So with that said, any new guests or members this evening that we need to introduce? Anybody that's joining us for the first time? Anybody would like to talk about themselves for two minutes? Once, one twice?
I nominate though.
Nominate, uh, he nominates you for that. Might be unfair about it. So, uh... Senior Chaplain, if you'd like to lead the invocation, we can, uh, begin your sermon.
We thank you for the love, we thank you for your power. We pray that you will give us open and honest elections in this time coming up. We pray that you will help us to be courageous, truthful, and, uh, to meet our obligations and, uh, help us to have a successful move to the fair this year. These things we ask you.
Thank you for answering. Um, let's take a move here. Frank, you want to do the pledge of allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The republic for which it stands, one nation, and one other, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take our seats. The minutes were approved litigably as an hour every month, so they went out, I believe, earlier in the month. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the minutes as they were published several weeks ago? Once, one twice, I have a motion that we approve the meeting, uh, minutes rather as presented.
A second?
A second. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Very nice, thank you all. Uh, I tell you what, since Murray just got here, we're gonna push the treasures report uh, behind, uh, our, uh, program tonight, so they'll give her a few minutes to get organized and updated, and Mike may not want to hear all the nitty gritty things like that. So, uh, where is Mike? Oh, there he is. So, uh, I'm gonna take a minute and introduce Senator Mike Stewart to us. Uh, Mike is currently a senatorial, uh, senator in the seventh district. Uh, he is a practicing attorney as well, in private practice, and, uh, is a former, uh, former US attorney, so quite a distinguished, uh, background he brings to the table. Uh, Mike is joining us tonight as an Attorney General candidate, so we're excited to have him and, uh, in for our program tonight. And with that, let's, uh, let's welcome Mike to the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Where do you want me to talk from, up here?
Yeah, wherever you want, Mike. Wherever you want to roll around.
So, uh, so I don't bring prepared remarks, listen, I've, uh, my name's Mike Stewart. Uh, maybe some of you know a bit of my record from being a United States attorney. It's always good to join soon Doug McKenna. Uh, we have a long history of working so hard for the party, and I appreciate all that, uh, that service. And Frank, and it's good to, good to see everybody here, and I thank you for coming out on a rainy evening, when there are a lot of other things you probably want to do other than listen to Mike Stewart talk about, a campaign for Attorney General, or some of the things we've done. But I say, I think it's awfully important, and, uh, I, I say this all the time, I mean it sincerely, I think I'm one of the most blessed guys in the world, not in the size of my wallet, and not in terms of personal achievement, but, uh, my rock solid family, the opportunities I've had in terms of working as a United States attorney, and, uh, and all those experiences that I've, that I've had over the course of my career. I'm not gonna go through the whole story, because I can spend a long time talking about my background and just how blessed I am, but I can still picture as if it's just right over there, that little white house, uh, with that tin roof and that holler in Barber County. And, uh, that's where I'm originally from, that's where my family's from. I'm the oldest of sixty-four, and we quit counting, grandkids on my dad's side of the family. And Grandma's house, I can still remember, you'd sit on that front porch, and you could look across the holler, and there was an orange creek, uh, creek some say, but to me it's still a creek. And it ran orange for acid mine drainage. And so I still remember as a little boy, we would be carrying gallon jugs of water to Grandma's house. And as a boy, I didn't, I thought that was entirely normal, uh, that folks did that. Uh, it turns out in too much of West Virginia, that's normal. I will say today, uh, in that holler in Barber County, that creek runs blue green, and it's loaded with trout and fish, and it's, uh, it's beautiful. And contrary to what some folks in Washington want you to believe, that holler's beautiful and filled with wildlife and filled with fish in that creek. My grandpa, and I love to to, point out these stories, because I think the greatest compliment my dad ever gave, my dad, a fifty-one-year coal miner, he would go to work in the dark, come home in the dark, and he had that minor vacation, I don't know how many of you have a, a, a background in the mining industry, but when I was a boy, there was the same two weeks every year that everybody got, where the mines were idle and people would go to the, we'd go to the beach, Ocean City Mayor.
First two weeks in July.
That was it. And, uh, growing up, I thought every ocean was cold, right? I thought every ocean was cold. Uh, but I'll tell you, those were, my, my child, my parents, they're young, uh, growing up, we had the challenges of every other family. Uh, my grandpa, uh, there was a saying, like in the coal industry, my, my, my family just liked it. Sometimes I say it, and, and every now and then I get a little bit embarrassed, and I'm sure they'd be embarrassed for me to tell these stories, but I'm an open book. And, uh, my wife, uh, sometimes it drives her crazy, because I tell all the stories that happened in the household, because it really is me, I mean, my family is, my family and my faith, I mean, I wear it on my sleeve, uh, I believe these things, uh, I never need notes to tell you my story, because I think it'll be the same story each time, because I think some people may not like the answer I give you on certain issues, but I'm gonna give the same answer every time. And, uh, but, you know, my grandpa was one of those folks that, I didn't even notice till after he passed away, and he was a coal miner too, my other grandfather was a coal miner. Coal mining ran in the blood of the family. In that little house with that big, my dad had nine brothers and sisters, my grandpa, uh, had served in the war, fought on the beaches of Normandy, I had no idea until after he passed away, he never talked about it, PTSD, and we know a lot of soldiers come back, and apparently my grandpa used to say it wasn't what he saw, was he, he couldn't get the smells out of his head from what he saw on those beaches. Uh, my grandpa liked to drink a little bit, or a lot, and, uh, the grandpa used to sit, and I still remember this little black chair, it was a big Democrat family, the idea, as a young boy, that I would be here, speaking to a group of Republicans, that was never gonna happen when I was a boy, never gonna happen. It was a huge Democrat family, big Union family, a big poor family, and that explains part of my switch to the Republican Party. It wasn't that I was enthralled with Republicans, I just said, generation after generation after generation, poverty, right? We've gotta try something different, you can only hit your head on the wall so many times. But I'm a mantle, my grandpa had this black chair that sat next to that coal burning fireplace, and there, I, I can still picture every bit of it, and that pile of coal outside and the buckets we would carry in. If you don't know, a coal burning fireplace, uh, that's pretty nice heat that comes out of there, probably not good to breathe, uh, but it's nice good heat. But grandpa sitting on the mantle above that fireplace with a bust of John Kennedy. You could touch anything you wanted in this house, anything, but if you touched the bust of John Kennedy, grandpa got younger and faster, and the fireplace was gonna be the crap out of you. It's true. I still have that bust of John Kennedy, it's one of my most treasured possessions. And some folks say, gosh, I bet knowing what you've done, and, uh, the experiences you have over the course of your life, I'll bet your grandpa's turning in is great, now the way you've done for Republican Party. And I say, no, I don't think my grandpa nor John F. Kennedy would recognize the Democrat Party of today. They wouldn't recognize it. It's a completely different story in America today than the, than the experience I had growing up. Right, I remember the hot dog roast, the wiener roast, I remember the ice cream that never actually fully froze, we used to drink it, right? I mean, you guys know these, uh, these hot dog and, uh, and wiener roast experiences. I tell people sometimes that that holler in Barber County defines me more than anything I've done in my life, right? It was those values that I gained from growing up there, it was the debates we used to have around the table, heck, it was the squirrel and every now and then that piece of buckshot that would break your tooth, right? These are the values, there are small-time values in America, I embrace those, thank goodness there are, and we just went through the whole controversy of, of that song from Jason Aldean, and, uh, after you listen to rap music and some of the stuff that, that, the bludgeoning of police officers and the shooting folks and the violence, how could they possibly pick a country song about small-time values? Try that in the small ti, it's true. As United States attorney, I used to say all the time, try that in West Virginia, you're not gonna get very far, I mean, you can go back to my tweets, I was very clear, try that in West Virginia, and you're not gonna get by with that. But the idea of me standing here, so I grew up in a family of hard-working coal miners, nobody had ever gone to college, I was the first to ever go to college in my family. I still remember as a young boy, uh, dad used to work hard and play hard, and I use the term beer joint, I don't know if you know what a beer joint is, but, uh, but, uh, you know, it wasn't an unusual thing on a Thursday night or a Friday night, as a young boy, uh, for my mom to say, uh, get in the car, we're gonna go find dad. And, uh, we'd drive around to all the usual spots, and when we found him, uh, I was sent in, and my job was to pull dad out, and that was just a normal thing. Listen, I had the best parents, it's interesting, these stories, a lot of folks are like, gosh, how'd you do the things you did? I believe today, like, people ask, who are your American heroes? It's my mom and my dad. They weren't perfect people, uh, but I had the greatest childhood, a mom and dad who loved me with, without condition, who gave me the foundation to do the things I've done today. And my mom and dad is still alive and kicking, still doing well. Uh, I tell people all the time, you know, all these neat things I've been able to do during the course of my career, sometimes dad will come on the campaign trail with me, and he'll walk behind, telling folks, listen, if he doesn't do what he just said he was gonna do, give me a call. Give me a call. And that's the type of guy, uh, that, uh, that my dad is and that my family is. Listen, I, I grew up in a family where the idea of going to college, of being a Republican Party chairman, of even being a Republican, of being, uh, a co-chair for a president of the United States Campaign in West Virginia, of being a United States attorney nominated by president, confirmed by the United States Senate, both Manchin and Capito, the idea of being elected to the state senate as a Republican in a six-to-one Democrat district against a four-term sixteen-year incumbent who was pretty popular, that was impossible. Every bit of that story was impossible. So my story's been pretty simple, I've just had to fight every bit along the way. And I do say this, like, I wasn't born with a fat wallet, and I wasn't born from a big family of, of opportunity, and so I had to learn as a young guy to fight hard, and I try to tell my kids this too, which is, your work ethic defines you more than your brains. And so I believe this, that, that, and I say it all the time, I may not be the strongest, I may not be the fastest, I may not be the smartest, but I can work you into the ground. Like, work ethic has always been my thing, and my family, oh, you always had to work hard. Those coal mining jobs, uh, I, I had an ad in my last senate campaign, because these solar panels are popping up everywhere. And so I said, those coal mining jobs, those are real jobs to put Christmas presents under the tree. I always appreciated those Christmas presents that came under the Christmas tree, were from my dad going to work every day in those mines. Those solar panel jobs, two jobs, a guy with a bottle of Windex and another guy with a roll of paper tabs, right? Not so many jobs. I ran that ad, and it caught a lot of attention in my senate district, because we had a lot of solar panel projects popping up, and, and coal's become the enemy of the state for the Biden administration. But I got a call from a constituent who said, listen, you're lying in that ad, you're lying. I was like, what, what am I lying about in that ad? He says, they're self-cleaning today. They're self-cleaning. There is no Windex, and there is no roll of paper tabs. Listen, I've had, I've had, uh, a, a blessed, uh, career, we've worked hard, I paid my way through college and went to WVU, and I get through all of it, I was one of those kids that went through Morgantown High, and originally from Barber County, moved as a young guy to Morgantown. Uh, I was surrounded by big achievers, and, uh, and they had a real impact on me. In my family, we never talked about, where are you going to college? It was never something discussed, all the other friends were headed off to these schools, and so I headed off to, to WVU, but when I got there, I'm a big fan of, it's not how you fail, it's how you finish. Not how you fail, how you finish. I'm one of those guys, that when I fail, I get up off the ground real quick. I started college with all the problems in the world, I was supposed to be one of those Rhodes Scholar candidates, but, and like I said, I'm an incredibly honest guy here, like, so I'm, you're gonna be like, all, all of my, uh, all the pebbles are gonna come out during this discussion, but, listen, when I started college, I was a little disappointed I went to WVU, because I had all my friends going off to these prestigious colleges, and still remember my dad, I got accepted at Princeton and Ohio State. I wanted to go to Princeton, and we had no idea how funding worked in terms of getting college loans. I still remember my dad meeting me at Huntington Bank, him coming in his coal miner outfit and applying for a loan to send me to Princeton, and I still remember, still chokes me up to this day, he got tonight, he got tonight, greatest gift in the world to me, right? So I ended up at WVU, and I'm one of those people that believe you can't pick your challenges, that there's this path that God's determined, you go down that path, and we sometimes can't explain the challenges that, that come upon us, but I'm one of those big believers, I truly believe this, that that path becomes clear over time, sometimes we don't even understand as we're walking that path. I went to WVU, and I found fraternity, girls and beer.
fraternity girls and beer?
No.
You ain't go to college, you're friends and beer?
Fraternity girls and beer, my grades were horrific, were horrific. So I was one of those folks that said, gosh, this is not how I do things, like, I work hard, I accomplish. So I dropped, I dropped out of WVU for several years, started a small business, learned a lot about running that business, and it was a coffee stand, back then the video store, a newsstand, had all sorts of neat things in there, and grew it fast, grew it fast, but any of you who are in a small business knows that, uh, it's not a fantasy, right? I mean, it's art, and, uh, typically when you start a small business, what's it about? It's you there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, every moment that store is open. And it grew from one location to two locations to three locations, and, uh, at one point I met with my accountant, and my accountant says, the good news is, you made this much money. I was like, what's the bad news? You spent this much money. You spent this much money. So I got motivated, I sold the place, this is interesting, because, I think it's interesting, we called it first edition News and Video, it was a massive newsstand, before there was anything like Borders or any of these things that you see, and a drive-through, espresso, cappuccino, this before there was Starbucks. So I can't be that smart, because had I been real smart, I wouldn't be running for Attorney General, I'd be managing my Starbucks implant all across the country. I sold that, went back to school, and I had never been more motivated, uh, than I was when I went back to school. And some of the blessings of this, right, I met my, uh, my wife, we've been married for almost thirty years, uh, she was the one that made all those cheesecakes in the store, and just before you're asking questions about this, it was a blind date that we went on, and she knew that if we were gonna date, she had to be at the store with me, because that's what you do in a small business, you work. And it was twenty-four hours a day, and, uh, the best thing ever happened to me is her. And, uh, went back to school, hyper-motivated, and, uh, graduated, to me, uh, not being US attorney, not being chairman of the Republican Party, not being co-chair of Trump's campaign, my greatest achievement in life, I graduated as the outstanding graduating student at the College of Business and Economics at WVU. And I love telling that story, because so many folks along their path will fall. And my story to folks is, get back up, get back up and embrace that failure. Listen, uh, I, 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 I hope there are some good questions in here, but I just wanna share some things in terms of, of my experiences as US attorney, I spent a lot of time here, we had a lot of good drug takedowns. Some of you know I'm pretty passionate about these issues, uh, I'm running for Attorney General, but I'm not running to be Attorney General as much as I'm running to do Attorney General, right? I think there's a difference, right? I'm not seeking a title, I've had great titles before, but I think at this point in our history, where we see what's happened at the Department of Justice, being a United States attorney, I revere, I still revere the Department of Justice, and I will tell you, it breaks my heart to see what I think is happening at the Department of Justice today. And that's just not me talking, I still have that peer group of US attorneys that we speak to across the country. I worked for three Attorney General's vosses there, and there are a lot of things I could tell you leading up to, like, like the nomination by the president, my experience as co-chair of that campaign, but there's certain things I want to make sure that I'm able to share with you tonight. Bill Barr, uh, I sat down with Bill Barr, regardless of what you think about, he gave me a line that I took with me, there are certain people you meet in the course of your lives, and there's a nugget you take, can't explain, at a convenience store you'll meet somebody, and that nugget, you're like, gosh, I just needed that nugget tonight, right? And so, over the course of my life, I meet all these people at these nuggets, having to be the Attorney General, I didn't work with them every single day, but I worked with them a lot. And I'm in his office, and we had a big investigation going, and he gave me a line that I always held with me as a United States attorney, it was, "We don't investigate people, we investigate crimes." Right? I, I love that line, and the light went off for me, uh, "We don't investigate people, we investigate crimes." I worry and fear, and the facts will prove out to be what the facts are, but what we're doing with Donald Trump today is investigating people, we're investigating Donald Trump, we're not investigating crimes. And, uh, and, uh, this is targeting of the opposition at this point, these, these charges could have been brought two and a half years ago, regardless of what you think about Donald Trump. And I know that he brings serious viewpoints from many people, there are a lot of folks that say, listen, I love that America first, uh, I love that America first agenda, but we have to win next time, this is true. I will sometimes ask groups, like, how many of you want Donald Trump's policies, but you want Trump-like or Trump-light? Here's the truth of the matter, the media is entirely in the tank, and so regardless of who we pick, like, if we decide to take the easier path, by the end of that campaign, in November of 2024, this will be a referendum on Donald Trump whether he's on the ballot or not. So we need to, we need to just embrace that challenge that's ahead, we've never seen challenges like this in our country, and I say this too, after what happened today, and some of these indictments, we're seventy-eight counts against the president, seventy-eight counts. To me, it's not so much about Donald Trump, the man, but what Donald Trump represents, right? It's about what Donald Trump represents in this country. And so, I don't want a two-tiered justice system, I look at what happened, and I hate what-aboutism, but sometimes what-aboutism is relevant. What about what happened during the Hillary Clinton period of time of reviewing thirty-five thousand emails, many of which were classified on personal servers, they use Leachbit technology, I have no idea what that is, it sounds terrible, and hammers to destroy the BlackBerry devices this stuff was on, if that's not intentional destruction of evidence, what is? You look at what's happening in the Hunter Biden case, it's unbelievable to me. And so I guess, I, I don't want, I don't want us to say there shouldn't be an indictment on our side, because there's no indictment on your side. I just say to the Department of Justice, be fair and balanced and impartial, and let it be equal, uh, let it, let it be equality under the law, let's look at all these cases fairly and reasonably, and we should never be questioning our justice system. As US attorney, and, and I won't talk forever about this, I think I had a pretty good record. So when you go to vote for Attorney General, I think you ought to be saying, who is it we need in that role? Not, not who's the nicest guy, who's the best-looking guy, I know I'm not the best-looking guy in the race, but you need somebody who can go into the federal courts and, and, and do what has to be done in terms of taking on the overreach by the federal government. Listen, I carry in my pocket, that, that job, I may have loved the role of United States Attorney, and I love that job, I wouldn't be standing here right now if Donald Trump was in office today, I would have been in that job if I could have signed a contract that gave me a lifetime US Attorney job, I would have signed it, I would have signed, I loved that job, it was a job where, in the morning when I got off the elevator, I was excited, when I got back on that elevator at night, I was excited, why? Because I could have an impact in people's lives, and I knew the work we were doing was critically important. Um, you know, we, we had the prosecution of the Supreme Court, a Republican and a Democrat, and I will tell you, there are folks under, I call it the echo chamber of the Golden Dome, right? That's West Virginia's establishment elite, the operator underneath that, that Golden Dome, and I think it's important that these politicians get out from underneath of that echo chamber of the Golden Dome and talk with people all across West Virginia. Because I can tell you that the attitudes I see from people across West Virginia are very different from what I see under that echo chamber of the Golden Dome, it's very different, they speak to each other, I think they actually believe what they tell each other is true, but if they get out in the countryside, places like, gosh, I, I was in Petersburg yesterday, uh, for a fair, and, and my, uh, constituents, Dan Logan, in Hamlin, and Chapmanville, and Philippi, if you go all across, if you actually speak with people, they're concerned about what's happening in Washington, they're concerned about inflation, they're concerned about all the challenges they're facing. Just today in Metro News, we see where the federal government is moving in to defund archery programs and hunt, uh, hunting safety programs in our schools. It's crazy, I can tell you, as Attorney General, if I'm in that role, I will use every ounce of my energy and every tool at my disposal to fight that stuff. I think it's crazy what's happening. But I look back, prosecution of two state Supreme Court justices, one a Republican, one a Democrat, I didn't care whether they were Republican or a Democrat, I don't like corruption, I think it eats at the social fabric of our communities, and it, it, it lessens our confidence in government. These are terrible things, there is a certain amount of folks, a lot of folks, believe a certain level of corruption's okay. I'm here to tell you, there is no level of public corruption that's okay, it needs to be prosecuted, we need to send big statements, it's not okay, whether it's a county commissioner, whether it's a mayor, whether it's a city council person, or whether it's a Supreme Court Justice, whoever it happens to be, corruption, not okay. If you're in the business of politics for corruption, you shouldn't be in the business of politics. But the other things I did as US Attorney, right, largest raid in the history of West Virginia, Operation Saigon Sunset Down at Huntington, more than two-hundred-and-fifty law enforcement officers and National Guardsmen focused on a hundred defendants, some of the worst of the worst of the worst. But I thought it was important, because when I became US Attorney, what, what I inherited in Huntington was a crisis. Marshall is a great economic engine for Huntington, but it's also a place where we raise our children and our families, and those streets have been taken over by drug dealers from Detroit and Columbus and Dayton and these other places. I still remember that day, and I loved that day, because I wanted the headline that said, they're back, they've taken the streets back, they're serious about it. And I still remember, there's the day where you're named US Attorney, and there's the day you become US Attorney. So the day I was sworn in, I was named US Attorney and became US Attorney, the day I really became US Attorney was that Huntington Police Department meeting where every federal, state, and local law enforcement agency was there, that huge raid, and it was massive. And I still remember that morning, I went in on that raid, and we had helicopters in the air, I had a control room larger than this room, with huge televisions, I could see every beatdown of every door, and I could see the overwhelming force that I ordered, uh, because I knew that the guns pointing back at us, if there were fourteen looking in that direction, they'd drop those guns, and that's what they did. But I did, I prayed a lot over that weekend heading into that raid, because I was worried, let you back a rabid dog into a corner, and a rabid dog does strange things. That was a huge day, I loved the reader comment that I got, in fact, the congressman sent me, I love hearing those helicopters in the air, love hearing it. But I love, even more than policymakers, I love reader comments, like, I love, in fact, I think they took it off, they used to love reading hobby stuff, and at the bottom, reader comments, to me, they're some of the smartest things you can find. But I loved one of the reader's comments that said, oh, great, now Stewart has helicopters. I like that one. But listen, we had the largest Medicaid fraud takedown in the history of the state of West Virginia, the largest elder fraud takedown in the history of West Virginia, uh, gosh, hundreds and hundreds of defendants, uh, pharmacies, you name it, we were serious about it, and, uh, was I driven? Yeah, I was driven, I had to rebuild that office when I inherited it, because it was built for the prosecution of one man, whether you like that man or not. That office had been totally consumed by the prosecution of Blankenship for him to get a misdemeanor, they spent millions of dollars, I can tell you that in the storage areas of the US Attorney's Office, there were more toys, Tonka trucks and all sorts of stuff that they bought for those trials, and he ended up getting a misdemeanor, sent away for a year, I'll point out, sent away for a year to California, imprisoned for a year for misdemeanor, that's crazy, in America, it's crazy. And I don't know Mr. Blankenship that well, I'm just saying, it's, that, that's not what I think of when I think of the justice system. So when I took over that office, we had to rebuild it, I recruited the best and brightest from across the country, from California to North Dakota to Iowa and Illinois and Massachusetts and Florida, I brought the best and brightest. I brought the best and brightest attorneys I could find and I wanted folks who weren't, weren't. Uh, I guess influenced by the West Virginia political system. I wanted folks that were going to be loyal to the rule of law. And so when I left that office, I truly believe I built the best law firm in the state of West Virginia. We were focused every day and I used to tell those folks, the smart people we were bringing in, I would always meet with them before I'd give them the job. Didn't care if they went to Harvard or Yale or where they went. And I had folks taking jobs that were turning down, like they were leaving. Jobs where they were making three-hundred, four-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars a year. So work for seventy grand a year, buying into the vision of the training we were going to give them and the job that they were going to be doing. But I would always meet with everyone who's looking behind and say, listen, you're going to do great here. But you have to respect our people, alright? West Virginians are joined by their circumstance, many of which didn't get a choose. So when you come here, don't think for one minute because you went to Harvard or Yale or any of these fancy sch-fancy schools. Somehow you're smarter than that farmer or that coal miner. And I said, because if I ever believe that you think somehow you're smarter than these folks, you're not going to last very long. And I wasn't, I was a tough employer, I drove a hard bargain. Because I told them, I said, listen, life's too short for you to work here if you're not passionate about what we're doing every day. But I tell you, all those things we did, elder fraud, Medicaid fraud, all the prosecutions. Gosh, I can tell you the details of so many cases, I carry, you can test me on this if you ever see me out. I carry a, uh, I carry a wallet and it's built with the victims of the opiate crisis. The victims from when I was US Attorney. And, uh, I started carrying this. I can tell you, there's Joel Archer, Victoria Douglas, I can tell you everyone, I've got some other moms and dads. These are the pictures that my wife says I just have to let go at some point. But I can't, great. These, these stories are too passionate to me because I know their families and I know the void that's been left in those families. Uh, from, from this opiate skirt in, in, across our countryside. Real quick story, Victoria Douglas. Let me get a quick drink. You guys will like, thank God he's losing his voice. But there's certain cases that, um, I'll never forget and when I close my eyes, I can see it. Victoria Douglas was like those kids that grow up in our families. Her mom and dad, uh, small business people. Um, they had, they had a trailer park, not big business. Victoria graduated high school in Charleston, moved down to Florida like a lot of kids do. And she was coming home to visit family. And Victoria came home, the family was excited, niece and nephew came over, you know what it's like? The whole family comes home and when, when the brother or sister comes in from out of state MC and for a while, it's a celebration. Mom, Melody and Victoria, her daughter, were supposed to go shopping the next morning. She had a big dinner planned for her, I know every detail. And when she got home, she ate dinner and she said, Mom, I want to go out with my friends tonight. And so I, I've learned over the course of my life, you guys probably do too. You have certain quote friends in your life and you have real friends in your life. Those quote friends are bad friends, they like your failure. Uh, it makes their lives easier. When you head off to the wrong path, they're not going to get you back on the right path, right? Real friends, real friends try to avoid that misery. But she went out with those quote friends and when she got home, it was before midnight, it was about eleven-thirty. And she went in and kissed her mom and dad goodnight and went to her room. And if you're like me, I know that when my teenage daughters were under my roof before midnight. Under, in our house, I slept under it because nothing good happens after midnight. I know who came up with that phrase? It's true, it's true. She went to her room, mom and dad slept great, they're excited, their daughter's home, niece and nephew already in bed, they're four and five years old. Next morning, they're supposed to go shopping early, if you're in Charleston, you head off to Columbus. But she traveled in from Florida, so what she did was she let her daughter sleep. She said she must be tired, I let her sleep. About an hour and a half later, they were in the kitchen and mom says to the niece and nephew, go hop on your, your, your sissy's bed and wake her up. And when they climbed upon that bed, they saw a scene they will never, they will never get out of, uh, of, of, of their, uh, memories probably. But she could hear screams coming from the room. Mom ran into the room, got the kids out, had no idea that her daughter had ever used drugs. Had no idea, many of us have no idea, our kids may be experimenting with drugs. But she knew something horrible had happened and she saw her daughter laying in the bed, blewish, cellphone over her heart. And mom did something I would never, ever have the courage to do, I don't think. And some of them choked up on this, but I know how moms think. And mom pried from her dead daughter's stiffened hand in that cellphone. And used her dead daughter's stiffened thumb to unlock that phone. And for three days, she kept that phone alive until, uh, prosecutors and police could get a hold of it because. What happens with these phones, this is something we don't talk enough about, whether it's Apple or Google or all these tech companies that make it very, very hard for us to prosecute these things. But it's interesting, after she unlocked that phone, it was about a half hour later, she gets a phone call. And the guy says, hey Vicki, I hope you're okay, that was pretty strong stuff. Mom says, no, I'm dead, and she hangs up. Nobody would take that case, it was a complicated case. The forensic examiner said in her bloodstream were three different types of drugs. Heroin, fentanyl, and crack. Most of you probably haven't heard of crack. This makes a complicated case to try, very, very, very hard to prosecute. And there are only certain charges you can get. Locals wouldn't take it. Nobody would take it, but I took it. Because I didn't think my job was necessarily to win it, but to fight it. I wanted to fight these folks. And so we took that case and it set, at, at, at charging, I could only charge not nearly enough, he was going to get seven years for this crime. But I decided to put his case in chief on at sentencing, which you're allowed to do. And I asked for an upward variance from the sentencing guidelines to double that sentence. Still not enough in my view. And so we put that case in chief on and when Melody Douglas' mom got up and testified and I saw a tear come from the judge's eye. I have to be honest, I was pretty satisfied because I knew we got. And his claim, I had no idea it was fentanyl, I thought it was only heroin. It's tragic. It's happening all across our country. Drugs and the battle against drugs has probably failed. But we fucked this all the wrong way and we haven't been, I still believe we're not serious enough as a country in dealing with this skirt. It has eroded the social fabric of every community, every school, every family in this country. I think much of the divide we see in this country today, Republican and Democrat. Stems from decades of drug normalization. And the moral covass of letting things just fall down and, and rationalizing bad behavior. That's what I believe. I think the idea, and I can tell you, I still have those clearances, the odd question, why does Stuart still have clearances? That's the federal government for you. Uh, but we know where the cartels put their heads on their pillow. We know where they eat their lunch in the afternoon. We know where they meet with their families. We should be targeting those cartels and we should be ending them. We make the most incredible drums in West Virginia. Tell you how serious I am about it, I went and found out we can make it, this one manufacturer about eight-hundred a year. And I asked him, I said, can we put an extra canister around those drugs? Because I want moms and dads to be able to put a note in there as we deliver those drugs where they opt to be delivered. The challenge with this is that drug normalization is taken on, alright? Everybody seems to be normalizing the idea that folks just get high on every substance imaginable, whether it's Tide Pods or heroin or fentanyl, it's crazy. Supply and demand, we always seem to focus on one or the other, we've never done both. And so I think we need as much treatment and as much love for those folks suffering through substance abuse to get them help and get them back to being productive citizens as we can give them. But we need to hit the providers of those drugs as hard as we can hit them. And we need to hit them where they spend their days and spend their nights and where they make these drugs. I believe that. I've gone on far too long, as Attorney General, I would change some things. You know, during the, the COVID pandemic, we had, by all accounts, and this is just as much as we know. About eighty-three million dollars in workforce West Virginia unemployment fraud. Eighty-three million, that's a lot, just in West Virginia. Do you know how many people have been prosecuted from that eighty-three million in fraud? Virtually zero, I think there was one prosecution that the US Attorney's Office did. I've argued and I believe this and most people know, most people believe this is already the case. That the Attorney General ought to have limited prosecution authority for state agency fraud. Whether it's securities fraud, drilling programs filled with fraud, unemployment fraud, the elder fraud that we see. The Attorney General is the logical pick to be able to prosecute those crimes. And trust me, no prosecutor in these counties wants to prosecute those things. Two, the other thing I carry in my wallet. Is a picture, I was down in Logan County. I've been traveling so much I've lost my voice, like I've been all over the place. Sergeant Maynard, if you know that case from Mingo County. And I was down in Logan County and I was walking through and these two state troopers looked gorgeous, dressed in those beautiful greens. Said, we love you, Mr. Stuart. And I could tell you, that means a lot to me when I hear that type of thing. And I went up to them and thanked them for what they do and Dustin Moore, who's traveling with me and helping on my campaign, he'll tell you that anytime I see law enforcement out there. I usually will go over and shake their hand and thank them for what they're doing and find out how things are going out there. Because it's tough work, first responders, law enforcement, tough work. The Sergeant Maynard was down in Mingo County, he was ambushed. Listen, this was over and over again, folks used the word ambush, ambush. This guy, that, that state trooper, I went up and said to him, those state troopers in Logan, I said. How are you, how are you getting law? Because it was not long after Sergeant Maynard lost his life. And I said, well folks, I think we need, it's time for us to talk about the death penalty for killing law enforcement in the line of duty. We need to have this discussion. We need to have the debate at least, right? We need to have the debate. Not a broad-based, I'm not, nobody's talking about lining them up and executing folks. Law enforcement, first responders in the line of duty, that's sacrosanct, right? We should never tolerate the idea of our law enforcement officers being put at excruciating risk that they, they face every single day. We ought to be more serious about this, it's time for us to have this discussion. And he said to me, that Logan state trooper, he said, he was my best friend, he was my best friend, and he handed me a sticker. Of Corey Maynard. And I will tell you, I challenge you to find anything that isn't the most noble of public servants about this guy. He was a son and he was a husband and he was a father. And what I've learned during the course of my life is, we go through life ignoring those special moments. Life is really about those special moments, right? We do the same things often at Thanksgiving and Christmas and all this, it's that special moment that means so much. Sergeant Maynard will never get another one of those special moments. Cassie Johnson in Charleston, typical parking, uh, parking issue, shot, killed. Nicholas County, we've had officers shot in the line of duty, killed. We just had a state trooper, uh, was it last week, that went up to a car that she pulled over? Shot in, shot in the elbow, shot in the elbow, lucky she wasn't killed. We, as a civilized society, should not be tolerating these things. And I don't, I don't come upon this decision lightly, but I think we ought to have this discussion. And I think it's important. And then thirdly, as Attorney General, I think Patrick Morrison's done a great job in terms of elevating the office of Attorney General in the state of West Virginia. Let me be clear, I haven't endorsed anybody in the race for governor. Credit where credit's due, he's done a great job in the role of Attorney General. And he's elevated that certainly over where Darryl McGraw had that office, is a professional standard in there. He has brought large-scale federal lawsuits. The office of Attorney General is different today than it was ten years ago, or twenty years ago, or thirty years ago. There's no requirement to even be an attorney in West Virginia to be Attorney General. It would be almost impossible to do that job today if you don't have experience at the federal level. These are complex. No, 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 I appreciate it. And, uh, but these are, this is very complex work, the work that's being done at the federal level. If you can't work through a federal lawsuit, if you don't know how the federal system works. If you're not prepared to day one to go to battle with these folks who are, uh, searching for the values. I always say, when people say, can't we just have a kinder, gentler tongue? I'm like, you kidding? They just broke in the front door to steal our freedom, our faith in our firearms, right? What, what, what are we supposed to be nice about? You better fight for these values. And so I think we need an Attorney General that is ready on day one. The operations I ran, just so you know, what type of budget, uh, guy I am, I got that accounting degree. And that political science degree and I worked as a public accountant for a while. And I'm pretty good with a budget. And as US Attorney in my final two years, a budget of about twelve-and-a-half million dollars, we brought in revenue of about thirty-six-and-a-half. A good return for taxpayers. Everything I was doing at the US Attorney's Office, fully paid for by the taxpayers. No subsidy from, of, of any sort whatsoever, in fact, I was subsidizing all that other wasteful spending they're doing in Washington. And so, what I'd say is, as you go to look at the role of Attorney General, I think it's important you have a conservative. I'm a conservative. And I think it's important that you look at the voting records of the folks who come before you. You're going to have every one of these candidates come before this group and they're going to be talking all across West Virginia. And they're all going to tell you what great conservatives they are. Look, I don't want to hit any, I'm friends with all of these folks, I'm friends with every candidate running for governor, every candidate running for Attorney General. But at the end of the day, this is about doing a job, it's not about your feelings. We're not electing the school patrol president, we're not voting for class president. This is serious business. West Virginia versus EPA, there are more people working in West Virginia today as a result of that case. That before that case was, was brought by, uh, Patrick Morrison and won by Patrick Morrison. West Virginia leads the nation with some of these Attorney Generals in terms of filing these suits and fighting back against the federal government. Your firearms, uh, don't think for a minute, there's not big effort to try to, to regulate and restrain your ability to own those firearms. Uh, my opponents, not as strong as me on these issues. And so I'm not going to talk anymore about that, I just urge you, look at voting records. Voting records matter, voting records matter. And I think we also need somebody who's able to sit in that chair. I don't sit a lot, but we need somebody who's prepared to get to work and knows how to get the work done and has a proven track record of doing it. And so any questions you have?
Yeah, why don't we take a couple of questions, we have time for truth or questions, if anybody, anybody has anything for the mic?
What should we be doing with needle exchange programs?
Right, so the easy question first. Listen, I'm an opponent of needle exchange programs, I think to the degree they're going to be done, they need to be very, 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 very narrow. Look, I, I, I'm not a big fan of the idea of taxpayer dollars being used to subsidize terrible activities. And so I think we ought to be spending more time getting folks not to use drugs, I don't think we should be encouraging drug use. We see in some communities, listen, this is a slippery slope, right? We have some communities around the country where they have a square you can go to and they hand you a spoon and a rubber band. And there's a doctor there to monitor when you get high. I, listen, this is not, this is not West Virginia values. And so I know across West Virginia that we're talking about needle exchanges, I think it's the wrong discussion. We need to talk about how we get into schools earlier and help our kids understand the challenges of raising your kids. My kids, uh, and, and listen, they got a different experience than some kids. When I went to a domestic violence, and there's so many things I'd love to share with you. Gosh, so many stories that just impact my heart. And, uh, that, that's why I'm running for Attorney General, because so many things have impacted my heart that I just think. We have to fight, whether it's domestic violence, elder fraud, the terrible stories I've seen. But on my kids, when I would be impacted by something, whether it was a substance abuse, uh, uh, long-term recovery unit or domestic violence shelter. Oh, so many things I would say, I would send my kids to the next week for the Santory. Because I wanted my kids to understand that what we're seeing in America today, it's not black or white or rich or poor. They're but for the grace of God, they're alive. And I wanted them to understand that you make the decisions in your life, I can't be there all the time. Now my kids believe as US Attorney, I have to track anything they were doing at any time. And I have to admit, every now and then I would joke with them and when they were dating a boy, I'd be like, can you deliver a social security number to me? But I think to this day, but I still, listen, my kids are twenty-two and twenty-one now and I still talk to them about drugs, all the time. And I tell them, go out there and have fun, I know you're going to have fun. But if I catch you using drugs, I'll punch you down, I kid you, okay? I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm serious about this, it devastates families. And so I just think we need to be more forthright in having these discussions. And so if it need to look changed, back to the specific issue, I, I'm a critic of needle exchange, I was critical, Charleston's program is completely out of control. Charleston gave out more needles during the equivalent period of time than Baltimore County. And these needles were being used as weapons against law enforcement. And so, listen, I'm a big, let me say this too, because I don't want you to say, hey, it's going to be a blind, he's going to be a blank check for law enforcement, do whatever they want. I prosecute a number of people in law enforcement, when law enforcement does bad, they need prosecute. I prosecute a number of people in law enforcement. When law enforcement does bad, they need prosecution. My experience is 99% of the time, law enforcement, noble public service. And it's time for a GI bill for law enforcement, first responders in West Virginia across the country, recruiting and retaining law enforcement professionals? It's almost impossible today. Some people wanna get rid of them, and this gets weighed out in a way, it's qualified immunity for law enforcement officers. It's a terrible idea. It's one thing to ask an officer to sacrifice his or her life on behalf of our public safety. It's an entirely different thing to say, "If you make a mistake, we're coming for your house and your kid's education fund." That's a huge mistake. And so, if it needle exchanges, I think, I think we need to talk. I, I'm a big fan that there's common sense in communities. And I don't think a bunch of unelected bureaucrats, or elected bureaucrats for that matter, I'll be sitting down making these decisions without talking with our communities and finding out what our communities want. And so, sometimes I get a hard time, because I'm a big fan of that. Like, I, I think these folks, whether it's under the Golden Dome, or these bureaucrats in Charleston or Washington, I think we need communities talking more about these issues. And I think people like me ought to be in these communities more often, talking about these things. And I think they ought to be square with you in terms of telling you what the viewpoint is. And they need to listen more than they talk, which would be a good idea for me, Richard.
I think there's a deal in the back of the question.
Uh, I know, it's probably not your area, but what's your feelings about, uh, paper ballots and same-day election results?
So, I can tell you my viewpoint on that. So, I'm, I, so, if I end up being Attorney General, and I think we got a good shot, listen, we, I, in terms of experience, nobody has more experience than I do for this job. And nobody's more prepared on day one. And I was encouraged by a lot of folks who know a lot of things, uh, that you need to run for this office. But in terms of paper ballots, I, I think there's a responsibility for citizens to know what they're doing when they vote. We've gotten to a point that, I, I'm afraid at some point, you're gonna be able to go to the Walmart checkout line. And you're gonna be able, they're gonna say, "Hey, it's a 9:12 for your bill, and do you wanna vote while you're here?" And I'm totally opposed to this idea. Listen, I like the idea of early voting being convenient, but the idea of, we need everybody to vote. I'll be honest, I'd rather uninformed voters not vote, right? I'd rather uninformed voters not vote. They need to spend their time, learn what the issues are, and vote. Everybody's entitled to vote, and I encourage everybody to vote, but I encourage everybody to learn the issues. So, this idea of, I call it Walmart voting, or McDonald's voting, like going through the drive-through at McDonald's, "Let me vote." I think it's bad for America, and I think there ought to be a burden of responsibility. I like, I vote on election day. I like that. I like going in to see my polls. Final point, I wanna make sure, because our party's growing. Nobody asked this question, but I wanna make sure I make this point. Our party's growing. You guys have been in the trenches for how many years, fighting for the Republican Party?
Too many.
Too many. Listen, we've been successful in sharing with West Virginia that there's a better vision, there's a better path to the future. We have so many folks moving over to the Republican Party today. Listen, we can't control the quality of the folks moving over. But I think we ought to be thinking about what's happened. Like, today, we have the editor of the Charleston Gazette talking strongly about switching over his registration, running for Secretary of State. Listen, I know, I'm friends with him.
Talking strongly about what?
Switching to the Republican Party and immediately running for Secretary of State. Here's my point about this is, I welcome everyone to the Republican Party. I was challenged by a reporter today. I love to challenge back, trust me. But I was challenged by a reporter that, "Hey, I thought you were for the Big Ten." I'm for the big Republican tent, right? So, if you're switching over to the Republican Party, I got you, you ought to be a Republican, right? And you ought to act like a Republican. And you ought to support Republican principles. It doesn't mean we all agree on every issue. There's shades of gray in all these issues. But if you're still one of them, why are you switching over to our side? Political expediency? I can tell you this, my whole life, I've never done anything to be politically expedient. Or I wouldn't switch this young man to the Republican Party. It would've been easier on the other side. But we have folks shopping our party right now. The challenge we face, it's not from the Democrat Party in West Virginia, it's our own party. And we need to make sure that we do the best we can to welcome folks in. But that we bring in folks who care about the values that we hold dear.
Very good. Hey, let's take a minute, appreciate Mike for, uh, Mike, you're more than welcome to stay. I know you've got a busy schedule, and we're gonna go through administrative stuff, whatever you'd like to do.
Sure, I'll just sit right here.
Okay, very good. Uh, well, Marie, we've had a little bit of time. Do you have an update for us, Steve?
Sure. Our secretary, Ms. Alex Allen, couldn't be here. So, I have her report, and, um, the previous balance was $11,738.01. The check she has written to Doug McKenney, $112.75 reimbursement for candy and supplies. The United States Postal Service, $88 for post office box rental. To Gordon Campbell, $5.30 for meeting agenda printing. West Virginia State Fair, $280 for the workers' tickets. We were actually comp 10 tickets. An ending balance is $11,251.96. And that's it.
Any questions for Marie on the financial? We're all in a very good place. We're in, uh, we're very, very strong for us. And we're going to the fair discussion here in a few minutes. We hope to add to that here very, very soon. With that, I'll just take a minute and talk about some old business with the group. We did take your vote of bylaws from last meeting. Through Jenny Kirk's help, we converted that into a final document, and then we did add that to our website. So, Thomas put that out there just the other day. So, the signed copy is on the website if you're interested in looking at the bylaws that you all approved. They're out there and available to you all. That said, to transition to our new business, branding and communication was the first thing I wanted to talk about. That was the, we had a lot of things got done last month. We had a new logo, we had the website approved, we had bylaws approved, a lot of the baseline stuff is done. Now, we're gonna start actioning on some of that. So, you'll see us driving more routine stuff to the website, so we can drive more traffic to the website and get people more influenced online on what we're trying to accomplish. So, you're gonna see the logo a lot more often, you're gonna see references to the website a lot more often. And again, Thomas has got a whole litany of communication strategies that we're working on so that there is no way that if you've got one of these somewhere in your home, you can't find out everything you wanna know about the Republican Club and what we're trying to do. So, be, stay tuned to that. But I would just ask you, if you have not been out to the website, which is on your agenda, uh, you know, go out there, click through it, it's a, just be honest, Thomas has done a fantastic job with it. Very high quality, it looks great. Navigate through that thing, look around a little bit, and, uh, and get comfortable with it, because we are gonna push more and more information out on the website going forward, and use it as a better communication tool for us. So, we appreciate that. Uh, with that, we're gonna take the time we have left to talk about the fair. So, uh, Brent, I guess you're up to give us an update on the fair, what we're doing, and how next week's coming together.
We have the schedule of shifts mostly filled. We have four vacancies out of the 10 days and the four shifts for each of those days. So, we're gonna need, um, someone to work on Monday the 14th in the afternoon. We need somebody on Tuesday the 15th in the morning. And two people on Friday in the afternoon, the 18th. That everyone else seems to be filled, and we are grateful for that. And we have some instructions for each of the workers when you come to work. You need to be familiar with these, and I will have these available for you to pick up. And there will also be a copy in the red binder at the table. Now, at the table, we're gonna have a sheet for accounting for any of the money that we take in. Donations and selling club memberships, if possible. And I intend to be there every afternoon for closing the shift because one of the things I saw in the 2021 instructions was, put the cash box under the table. That's not gonna happen on my watch.
Those were changed into 2022 ones. But either Trey or I picked them up.
Yep, good, good. So, we want to make sure that, uh, when I come and take possession of the cash box, I will sign, and I would like one of the other workers to countersign that with me so that we can all account for knowing where that cash box is, and I will get it back the next morning. What I'm going to need, some guidance on is, how much money each morning do we start the cash box with? So, we will work those out. And we have tickets for each of the people who are gonna be working for each day you're going to work. If you don't already have one of those tickets, Doug's been kind enough to provide those for us. And we want you to be able to get in, to work your shift. And it will be for five hours, from 9:00 to 2:00 in the morning, and 2:00 to 7:00 in the evening. And I will, if there's a need for me to be there later, I will be there, because I'm not going to any of the concerts. Is there anything else we need to cover, Doug?
We have invited, or we've notified all the statewide candidates that we are glad to take their literature and to display it at the booth. And Mike has left some here. We've already gotten some from, uh, a couple of the gubernatorial and senatorial candidates. But we'll, we'll not be handing those out, you know, preferentially. But they will be available for, for the public to pick up there. So, they've all been invited to do that. And I think we've had four or five of them so far have sent us their stuff.
Good. And I wanna thank Sue, uh, Sue McKenney for preparing the new list of general instruction. Thank you very much. Anything else? I will have the calendar up here, ready for you to volunteer for an extra shift. And we will say, "Tell them what they want, Johnny, and it's not going to be a new car."
Brent, we, we've also invited, invited the candidates, uh, that the booth is open if they want to come and spend some time there. So, that would be great. It'll be interesting to see how many of them actually show up there for that. Ken is next door, so he shows up every day for a while.
We're also going to have the opportunity for people to admire the cutout of the Donster and, um, to help them take their pictures with him. I am advised that Melania is not going to show up. Disappointing.
We, we also have Procyon Gordon finding them. We're not handing out Trump dollar bills this year. We're handing out $2,000, $2,400 bills. Inflation's hit hard.
Not good for the payment of actual debts.
Which we got fooled by one time. Um, the only other I would mention on the fair is probably two things, more on administrative side. Each one of these tickets that we purchased was $8.25 for the Republican Club. So, if you had volunteered to work your shift, uh, we would ask you all to attend and, and consume the tickets. Because if you pick up your tickets and don't work your shift, and we have to buy a replacement ticket, and also find a person to work that shift. So, if you're gonna, uh, accept tickets and work your shift, we ask you all to do the fact show up. The other one that I would mention as a fiscal responsibility, each one of these Trump bucks cost us 11 cents. And I bought 3,000 of them. So, if you do the math for 10 days, it's 300 a day. So, what we got into last year, we had a real good success with these last year. People loved these. But we ended up giving away probably more than we should've on an individual basis. And again, it's not a one-for-one, uh, but it did, we are sort of asking for donations, accepting donations. We can't sell anything in the West Virginia building. But I just want everybody to be mindful when you work your shift. If some kid comes up and wants 25 or 30 of them, unless mom's there with some money in their pocket, I would kinda push them off into another direction. Maybe give them one or those kind of things. So, once the 300 are up for that day, then we're on to the next day. So, just remember, as you think about these, they're 11 cents apiece. Last year, we did a great job. We got, you know, basically a dollar, real dollar back for every fake dollar we sold. So, you know, that's by 80 cents in profit by the time it does settle on that. So, it was a, it was a real good, real good fair for us last year, and we hope to do well again this year. So, just think about that as you go through that. We, we ran into a little bit of a problem with that first part of the fair last year, where, you know, kind of stacks were getting handed out, that kind of thing. So, just be mindful, they were not, they were not free.
The key thing to remember is, we can't sell anything.
Right.
You can ask for donations.
We do ask for donations, and again, if people don't want to, no, then, you know, they want a Trump buck, that's fine. If they want to take a picture with the big guy, that's fine too. We do, you just wanna work on your selling skills, talk about accepting donations, you know, event thing to party and all those sort of things. I'm sure they're in the instructions again this year. Any questions for Brent or Doug before we move on? Because this is our big, big event for the next couple of weeks, to get this thing knocked out. And I would be remiss if I didn't in advance thank everybody for who has signed up for a work shift or two, and we appreciate your, uh, your support. It's a lot of fun, right? You get to talk to a lot of people, we get a lot of, uh, a lot of good support up there.
There is one, uh, thing, uh, my wife actually brought this up, uh, the cutout for Donald Trump. We have other candidates now seeking the nomination for President. And why do we only have, uh, a cutout of Donald Trump? I think the answer seems to be because he was a very good fundraiser last year, and he will be a good fundraiser this year. And we, we don't mean to prefer him over the other candidates, because that's what a, uh, primary election is for. But, um, we do want to thank him for his ability to bring support, uh, vocal and monetary to the party.
Very good. I mean, to sit the law down in the plain English, Trump sells. If you heard Mike's comments earlier, Trump is on the agenda next November no matter who's on the ballot.
He defies the art of the deal.
That's true. And when you work, work a shift at the fair, you will find that there's a reason why he's 35 points ahead of the poll right now. So, that's, that's the reason we do that. We did not feel like the Santa's cutout, for example, would be nearly as exciting as Mr. Trump. No, items for the good of the club. Uh, any open items that we need to talk about as a group before we move on?
There is one thing, Marie has, uh, our bylaws, which we adopted in July. Said that the Secretary would have rosters of the club information available, uh, at the March meeting. So, we're either four months behind or we're eight months ahead. Marie has, has those, uh, for distribution. Mike, if you'd like to have one, know who, uh, and methods of contacting people in the club, she has.
Uh, if you'd like to have one, I'm gonna weigh them out here, and please come up and get one.
Uh, any other items for the good of the club that we talked about? Once going twice. I just wanna reinforce a message that I gave sent out last month, and it was kinda busy and a little noisy towards the end of the meeting last month with all the activity we had. Hang on a second, back. And we will, uh, wanna reinforce the message on expenses. You heard Marie detailed report for Ally on who's getting checks, who's money coming in, going out. We, we are legally bound to report that. And so, I said all that to say, you know, as you buy things, contribute things, and do things in support of the club, we appreciate that very, very much. But we need, we need to account for all that as well. So, whether it's a, a dollar donation that we, uh, that we accept, or is it what we call in-kind donations? Like, you buy a good or a service and donate to the club, then we need to have a record of that so we can keep up with that. And that should be the last time I would like to talk about that.
One more thing, George. We will be setting up our booth next Wednesday at noon, and we'll have the backdrops available. and we'll have the, uh, backdrops available. We've got all the pictures are done, so, uh, we'll be, uh, anybody that'd like to come and help set up the booth, if you're willing to come at, uh, noon.
Noon on Friday. In, in the West Virginia building. It's in the West Virginia, it's right up, right opposite the, uh, the entrance if you come in off of it.
Uh, if you want to find us any information on that roster, if it's incorrect, please let me know, and I'll update it.
Very good. So just quick dates to remember as we close out. The fair begins next Thursday, so we will run for 10 days. Cue the Fun is the, uh, the, uh, theme this year, so, uh, be thinking about that as you sign up for the last four spots that are open. In September, we'll have, uh, Mac Warner will be with us, a gubernatorial candidate, so Colonel Warner will be back in Greenbrier County. We're very excited to see him again. In October, we have Chris Miller joining us, uh, also a gubernatorial candidate. And then we will close out the calendar year in November with, uh, Senator Ryan Wells, who is an Attorney General candidate, uh, who is, uh, gonna come and speak to us, uh, for a few minutes. Just as a long-term planning in December, we normally don't meet in December, we normally do our dinner, and next month we begin to talk about the dinner. However, he does not currently talk about volunteer opportunities. So, uh, we are looking for people to help out with the dinner again this year. I seem to be mentioning that every month, uh, but I'd like everybody to think about that. The team that does the dinner does a great job, but they've been doing it year after year after year. And so we, some people that would like to assist in the dinner would be more than appreciative, I'm sure. Uh, as well as the membership chair. We do have that role officially, uh, appointed now in the, uh, in the bylaws, so that's out there on the line. You can all look and see and touch what those duties are, and we are gonna reach out and try to get that filled here shortly, because we have a few things going on. Uh, that said, if we have anybody that would like to make an offer on this fantastic embroidered bag? If not, we'll hold it for next month. Let everybody think about it. We are looking for fantastic donations for a fantastic bag, so. Thank Roseanne for that. If you're interested, come see me afterwards, we'll talk through that, and we will carry over to the next one. Uh, I think that's all I wanna talk about. Ron Kirk, you're still here? You wanna take us through our, uh, closing?
All right, choir, let's sing. God bless America, land that I love. Send beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans, white with foam. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home.
Thank y'all for coming, and, uh, President Sis, we'll see you at the fair.